Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you to our October 30th, 2023 Board of Education meeting. We are calling the meeting to order and it is 7:00 PM. And if everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, the legitimate stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A reading of meeting notice. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of this act, the Verona Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published in the Star Ledger, posted with the Township of Verona and the Verona Education Association. Postings of this setting, of this meeting setting forth the time, location, and agenda were posted at the Verona Board of Education office and on the Verona Public Schools District website. Copies of tonight's agenda and resolutions have been made available to the public via the Board of Education website. Mr. Cruz, if you could please call attendance.
Sure. Mr. Walker? Mrs. Frizzella?
Here.
Mrs. Farrar? For the record, Mrs. Farrar is absent. Mrs. Prisco?
Here.
Mrs. Freshy?
Here.
We have corn. Thank you.
Thank you. So moving on to our agenda, we will start tonight with our superintendent report from Ms. Diane Giuseppe.
Good evening. Happy Halloween. Uh, we are all set for our parties and our parades tomorrow and given that it's an early dismissal for professional development, our students can go home and get ready early for, uh, collecting all those treats. And it's not gonna rain. What do you know? Good for them. Chili, but not rainy. Uh, just wanna start by congratulating the Verona High School marching maroon and white uh, for the recent win at the Rutgers University, uh, at Rutgers University in the America Regional Championship on Saturday. Uh, Verona took first place for Group A with best visual, best effect, and best music. Uh, what a way to end the season for this hardworking group of kids. Uh, moreover, uh, across the country, there were three regional events, uh, one in Southern California, one in St. Louis, and then the Rutgers, uh, competition. Uh, VHS Band was ranked second in, um, in all of those competitions behind Damian High School, California by one point. And, um, uh, there are thirteen that are in the 1A class. So 1A class means that you have fewer than fifty members in your band. So it's the smallest marching of that classes of band. Um, but out of the thirteen Class A bands that competed, uh, we did very soak congratulations to them. Um, November 1st, the VHS, um, uh, Fall Cabaret will be at seven o'clock in the auditorium and they are, uh, highlighting love, change, and betrayal. Uh, the cabaret is a collaboration between the Coral Department and the Spotlight Players. Uh, tickets are $10 for adults and five for students and seniors. Uh, this should be a great show. I just wanna give the board an update on our high-impact tutoring grant. Uh, at our Essex County Superintendent's Roundtable, last Friday, we were told that although the grant was supposed to have been awarded so that we could begin on October 11th, providing tutoring services to the students in Grades Three and if we're awarded enough, uh, to expand to Grades, um, Two and Four. Uh, they are not ready yet. I know everyone is shocked that the Department of Education has fallen behind their own deadline. Uh, we are expecting to hear something in the range of mid to late November. Um, we, uh, did, uh, take part in the graduation appeals. So each year, the department allows schools, um, school districts or schools, uh, that have graduating seniors to, um, formalize an appeal process that provides us the opportunity to resolve any issues due to incorrect or missing data uh, in our graduation data before it's finalized and used for accountability purposes. Uh, we did find that two students were inaccurate and they were able to resolve that. Thank you, Mrs. Ackerman, who picked that up and was able to, um, get that approved before the deadline. We're getting ready, uh, to embark on a full-blown Quality Single Accountability Continuum, or CUSAC, New Jersey CUSAC. We start with the Health and Safety Buildings Checklist, which is the only component of CUSAC that is annual. The, uh, the rest are every three years. Uh, we are being onsite monitored, uh, for the rest of, um, the CUSAC areas, um, which are instruction and program, fiscal, governance, which is really more about how the board functions and policy, et cetera. Fiscal's obviously the BA's office, uh, operations, which is a little bit of everything. It's, it goes across, um, how, just how the district operates with regard to students and policies and processes. So it's almost like the implementation of the governance and then, um, personnel. And there's a hundred points available in each category. A district has to score eighty percent in each area to avoid avoid being put on a dip or district improvement plan. Um, we have to have our district performance review. So the process is we go through those five areas and all of the, um, sub-areas and we rate ourselves and give ourselves a score. Then we submit that by, um, December 15th. So it will be coming before the board before, I guess, the December, is it December 11th is our next, is our December? December 12th, on that meeting, we will ask you to, you'll have seen it ahead of time to approve it because it has to be approved by the board before we can submit it and it's due by December 15th. Once the department gets that document, uh, they will schedule a time to come out and monitor us and see how close our own rating came to what they feel, um, we deserve. So it's, it's a very, very complicated and drawn-out process. Um, but we, uh, we started it already. So we're ready to go. And that's my report for tonight. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, moving on to our Business Administrator's Report by Mr. Cruz.
Good evening, everyone. Um, in finance this month, uh, we do have our, uh, September Secretary and Treasurers and Transfer Report. Uh, they're all in agreement. Uh, recently, our auditors spent a week with us, um, here in the Board Office and, um, uh, conducting field testing for our 2223 audit. Uh, I anticipate that the auditors will provide their report and the presentation, uh, to the board on our, at our December 12th meeting on, on Tuesday, December 12th. Uh, October was a very busy month for us. Um, we, we had quite a lot of, uh, financial reports due to the state. Uh, this month, um, we completed the non-public completion report, IDA, IDA, ARP, uh, the ESSA, which is our Title I, Title II, Title IV, and, uh, SO2 explanatory reports. And right now, um, another piece is, uh, although we're at the start of the school year, we're also, um, beginning preparations for our fiscal '25, uh, budget. So, um, we're, we're getting in, in the process of, of, uh, taking, um, starting that off. Uh, next month, I'll be sharing a tentative, uh, budget calendar with the board, uh, for board approval, which then will actually start our budget process, uh, internally and, uh, with our administrators and, uh, the team internally before, uh, we, we present it publicly. Uh, that concludes my report for today. Thank you.
Mr. Cruz, does anyone have any questions? Moving on to, uh, our Student Representative Report, Ms. Reese Shahado.
Uh, yes, so short one for me. Ms. D Giuseppe covered. You're all good. Don't worry about it. It's district-wide. There we go. Um, so the life, learning life skills development and class hosted an event, uh, today, actually. Sold candy, gift bags, baked goods, as well as hosting a little photo booth type setup in the main lobby. Photo booth in the cashier type stuff was student-run. It, they did a great job. Huge turnout. Um, Student Council is organizing the annual Halloween Parade con, costume contest tomorrow during first period. And I just wanted to say thank you to the band and the drum line specifically for their help and participation for that. I recognize that that's like extra time and a little more work on them. So it's much appreciated. Uh, and the Student Council will be decorating the fall lobby, the lobby for the fall on Thursday, and that's about it on our, our end for now.
That's, oh, I have a question. Who was the winner of the hallway contest for decorating the hallways?
Hallway contest decoration winners? That was the juniors.
Under the sea, right?
Yeah.
Under the sea. They were great. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Moving on to our committee reports, we'll start with, um, education did meet late. So we're gonna, we just added that. So Ms. Frizzella, if you would like to speak on that.
Thank you. Um, so we met just like an hour ago, an hour and a half ago. Um, yeah, for an hour and a half. So my notes are a little bit all over the place. So excuse me if I'm a little scattered. The open CPAC meeting was held on October 4th. Um, it went very well. Um, they changed up the, the format this she, this time, asking, uh, parents to submit questions. And, uh, then the director, Tanya, was able to create a presentation that would address all the, all the questions the parents had. So it was a little bit more cohesive and provided a little bit more information uh, to the parents. So far, it's had a great feedback and, um, we're looking forward to continuing that. Um, Inclusive Schools Week is January 22nd to the 26th. Um, they've already started planning, uh, for that with the, uh, principals in each of the schools. So look forward, look for some information about that. They've also added some professional development, um, specifically for co-teaching models because we now have the three co-teaching classes, co-talk classes in, uh, some of the elementary schools. So to provide some additional support, they're doing, uh, some PD for that. The life skills class is still moving forward. Uh, we've ordered all the appliances. Um, they've started talking about plumbing. I think a sink arrived today. So there's, 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 there's progress. It's, it's like any construction. It's you set a deadline and then you laugh at it. Um, then there's been on home instruction, there's new, there's a rollout of new home instruction procedures and some professional development, uh, was attached to that so that we now are providing a little bit more in terms of documentation that, uh, we really needed to do. Uh, there's some professional development. There was a presentation by the Partnership for Children, which some people may know as, like, Perform Care, um, which is a state agency that provides support, uh, in-home for families. They also do provide some wraparound services and will coordinate with schools and attend IEP meetings if needed. So it's, it's actually a really great, uh, organization. Uh, they came in to, to talk to the Child Study Team members about what they can offer and how they can partnership, partner together. There was, for the first time ever, there was a combined, combined department meeting with the Counseling Department and the Child Study Team. Um, and so they were able to create one common professional development, uh, goal for both departments, um, which is, the goal is to utilize data, uh, data more in, in decision-making. On October 19th, there was a new teacher, uh, new teacher group presentation on IEPs, 504 plans, and the INRS process to make sure that all the new teachers that are coming into the school district understand, um, our expectations and how these processes work in Verona. Um, for the first time ever, the Child Study Team is submitting, um, professional development plans and one pilot student growth objective, or SGO. Uh, this is the first time the Child Study Team has endeavored to do this. So, uh, the, the SGO is specific, uh, based on the individual. Um, so it's, it's gonna be interesting to see, uh, on the back end how, if they've achieved their goals. Like, SGOs could be like a ten, uh, observing, uh, uh, like a case manager observing all their students on their, their roster in the class at least once during the year. So it, it's, it's just, it's very individualized. Um, in terms of staffing, the open LDTC uh, position in the elementary schools, there are, we are interviewing. So hopefully, we will have someone soon for that. Um, the gifted program, Ms. Zambrano, is meeting with the school communities and hopefully this letters for students will be going out in the next few weeks. So we can get started on that. The curriculum, uh, is now live on the curriculum instruction and assessment website. It's the new atlas mapping. So people will be able to go in and just dig around a little bit. It's, it's kind of interesting if you're kinda nerdy like me, um, and you can go and find all the different, uh, New Jersey learning standards and how we're addressing them. Uh, let me see. Uh, on October 11th, there was an elementary math night at Brookdale, which went very well. There was fifty parents and they went over, I guess, the new new math. I, I don't even because, uh, they, you know, the brand-new math. So
Giving parents a way to support the, uh, their, their children and how we're teaching them that.
Right. So it kinda helped them understand because it, it's a little different than how I learned math, but it's good. Um, and then on October 25th, the elementary, there was an elementary literacy night, um, which was attended by about forty parents. Uh, you know, they, they discuss things like how the INRS referral process goes um, and how they just screen for dyslexia, stuff like that. Um, and then foundations training is continuing for kindergarten, first, and second grade teachers. Uh, the letters cohort, uh, met again last week and that's still continuing. I think that, uh, uh, there was a sustainable New Jersey grant was submitted for $2,000 to expand the Verona Community Gardens. Uh, thanks to Carol Thomas for help, helping spearhead that. And then a recent new addition, just to Christopher Flood, uh, started at the high school as the new choir director. Um, so far, everyone seems to be very happy. And then my daughter is. So that's it for education.
Very much. Does anyone have any questions for?
I do. Uh, please. And, um, maybe Mr. Ms. D Giuseppe, you might be better poised to answer it. Can you just talk a little bit more about what the co-teaching model is?
So, um, in New Jersey, it's actually not in New Jersey. The federal government, uh, wants us to be progressing, uh, what's called the restricted environment. The one for children in groups restricted environment, if they, if they have an ID. Well, these restricted environment is in a mainstream class. If they can't get in the mainstream class without some support, the next level would be with, um, a shared aid or a co-teacher in the classroom. So a co-teacher is when you take, um, a, a general education teacher, um, at the elementary wall, it could be a eight, six, or a ten numbers, an elementary certification, and then someone with an elementary certification and the students with a school certification. And the teachers, uh, plan together, keep together, roll out, um, uh, assessments together. Generally, the general educator, especially as you get to the upper grades where you start having specialists and specialized certifications, will plan with the special educator and the specialist educator role and modification materials, looking at individual students and how that lesson can be delivered so that all students can and it's really advanced, um, when you have to break and working together and they would need to click. So getting as much professional development for them.
Yeah, that's great.
And the elementary levels here, we've had it, uh, grades five through twelve for quite a few years. Uh, but we are new to it. Uh, we're new to it elementary, but it's great that we have it and we're looking to expand it because it really is the least restrictive environment for our students that are not mainstream, uh, individually in those classrooms. And, um, so what you'll see is, uh, more students staying out of the resource center and involved in other.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
And then just to, I'm sorry, just to add to piggyback on that, it's really great because it it allows students to maybe push themselves a little bit more because they want to do what all the other kids around them are, are doing. It, it helps, it helps push them. It also helps with social interaction. Now they're not the kid that's going out, you know, every day for ninety minutes. They're there, they're in the class all the time and and it really does help with that social emotional development that you have with kids.
And exposed to grade level standards, which doesn't happen in the resource center. So if you remember back last year's New Jersey, uh, Student Learning Assessment Report at the Department of Elementary and we saw we had that whole red line and special education that were down in two and one. And we want them to be in one five. Because anything below, three or below is not passing the same class. Um, you'll start to see that line change in that, as we move for this model because what happens in the resource center very often, teams are not exposed to grade level standards. So then we're being tested at grade level standards and that not even being exposed to them, we're not really going to start to change.
Yeah, that's awesome. And then my other question was regarding the gifted and talented or gifted student. How are those students identified?
Good question. So initially, they are identified either by a parent, by a teacher, by an administrator. Um, it could be any of their teachers, a special teacher. It can be the gifted and talented teacher who's been pushing into classrooms and assessing kids. Once we have students that, uh, we have a list of students that have been recommended, um, then they take the NNE, which is a non-verbal, um, assessment of giftedness. It's one of the few tests that they use to, to determine giftedness. And so there's a cutoff score at some point. I'm not sure because this is our first year doing it, whether or not, um, we'll be able to be flexible with that score. I guess it depends on the number of students and how well they do.
All right. Thank you. I'm good.
Oh, anyone else have any questions?
I just wanted to add on to the assessment stuff just because I've been listening in, uh, that it's like, you, it's like the holistic nature of the approach that they're taking. It's the in-class assessment. It's that. And it's also like the more straightforward academic performance that's taken into account along with recommendations and testing.
Yeah, the academic performance, it kind of does two things. It comes from the teacher. It's usually what the teachers are making to make the recommendation, but it also, uh, is a multiple measure used to determine those kids that are gonna take the NNE.
Thank you. Anyone else have any other questions? Moving forward, we'll go on to our finance. Um, so I will take that. We met back on October 17th. Mr. Cruz did bring up um, some of the items that we, um, have on our agenda. Uh, this September financials are on, on the agenda for approval. He's been working very hard in the month of October submitting all those reports to the state. Um, they were filed by the 13th of October. Uh, maintenance plan, we are approving tonight, the comprehensive maintenance plan on F5. That's on our agenda for them.
Um, let's see. The auditors have finished and they, they should be here to present on December 12th. Our playground update, um, there's, you're doing a testing is underway to provide a current state of the rubber surface. And let's see, we talked about CUSAC is coming to walk through the buildings. And I believe, oh, the other, uh, item we discussed also was we are beginning our conversations on the natural, National School Lunch Program and going out in January for an RFP for food service management. So we will be having those discussions from going forward as well. Did I miss anything, Mr. Cruz? Thank you. Any questions?
Oh, yeah, just RFP abbreviation on that. Could I get a, yeah, request for proposal? Thank you.
And now on to our Facilities and Operations Committee Report.
Um, I'll start by admitting that Lisa always does such a much better job at, at this than I do. Um, but the first thing is that, uh, we hired, uh, another maintenance, uh, employee who's actually a licensed plumber and that's a big deal because plumbing problems literally stink. So I think that was a really good person to hire. Um, the routes of egress drawings, um, they're completed district-wide. Not only does that help our, our kids, uh, but I think too, when we, when we lease out or rent out the facilities to groups, um, it's good that everyone will know exactly where they should go in case there's some type of emergency. So good job on that. Um, uh, I'm imagining that it probably wasn't our board attorney, Jorge, but, uh, I, he, he, uh, Henry talked about the GMAX testing was recommended by an attorney. So that's like the, the testing of how buoyant or how soft the, the field turf is. Uh, so we're waiting on a quote for that, uh, and then I guess it'll be decided whether we wanna go forward. Um, you guys talked about the CUSAC and the fire inspections. And the one thing I thought was interesting as well. So it's, it's a really good thing that we have ACs, the district-wide now, but I guess the one company, the TRANE, Train, um, we're having issues with, with their technology and, and with their equipment. Um, and it's, it's, it's something that, you know, Henry, our, our, our facilities directors have been, been having some headaches with. Um, but it looks like we're kinda locked in to them. Could, can you kinda explain that a little better than I am, Jorge?
Or so, so, uh, a lot of the HVAC equipment that, um, uh, pretty much all the HVAC equipment that we purchased through the referendum were our train equipment. So right now, the district has three different BRS, uh, systems. So it's basically building management systems. So, uh, so some of the older systems that we have, they're literally in the building. You have to physically be in the building to manage it. Train, it, it is, um, a, a much, uh, newer, robust system. But the one thing that, um, the issue that we're running now with Train is that it's a proprietary system. So only Train is allowed to be able to, um, uh, have to take, uh, the technical capabilities of being able to, um, uh, manage that system to a certain point. So we do have a licensed HVAC, uh, staff member on our team. But at, at a certain point, um, there's so much that he has access to, um, when, then we have to actually get Train involved. So that's one of the things that we're looking at, um, and, and seeing if it's possible to, uh, go into an open system where we're able to then go out, bid out, uh, the support as opposed to being locked in to just, uh, uh, getting the support from Train.
But we're, we're locked, I think we're contractually locked in for at least the rest of this year or what, is it July? When's the?
So, so yeah, so, um, it will be for the rest of this, um, school year. Um, right now, we are working with our architects. We have the Raj Grant. Um, there, there is a proposal for addressing the need, um, other HVAC, uh, needs in the district that didn't get, didn't get addressed in the referendum because of, um, uh, budget constraints, um, that we were over budget at that point. Uh, but the, the, the proposal will be, uh, to go into another BRS system that will allow us to have an open system and, 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 and see if that's something that will be beneficial for the district long-term.
Good. And, um, I guess the last part of my report is just, uh, we talked the last couple of meetings about the, the football field, what's it called? The Field House where like the, where the announcers are.
The press box.
The press box, yeah. Um, that was, we're good for the rest of this school year, uh, but we're, we're, we're working on making sure we're gonna be good for extended periods of time after that.
Right. And, and we are gonna have some drawings with the architect to have a replacement for. So right now, the repairs that were made, it's just gonna give us to the end of this school year. It's not, it's not a, a, a permanent repair.
Very good. That's, that's my report.
Great. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Moving on, we have policy and governance. Did you ladies meet?
Going.
Thank you.
Most of this is, uh, was, uh, cleaning up some of the policies that was, that were just kind of outdated or, or needed some updated on language. Yeah, stress estimate updates. Um, we abolished a few and, and we, just because they were, um, outdated. Um, the main one that I wanted to point out was it is 5111 eligibility of resident, non-resident students. It's, I believe, the regulation. The way the current one reads, if a student starts and attends one day at school in Verona, they can stay for the, and then moves out on day two. They can stay for the entire school year without paying tuition, which is not the normal in, in New Jersey. Um, so we are proposing that we have it. Um, it reads students whose parent or guardian have moved away from the school district during the fourth marking period and 12th grade students whose parent or guardian have moved away from the school district during the third or fourth marking period will be permitted to finish the school year in this school district without payment of tuition if the following, following conditions are met. One, student must have and continue to maintain a record of compliance with attendance and discipline policies. And two, maintains passing grades in all classes. So if a student would fall into that category, you know, senior year, Mom and dad moves to Caldwell, for some reason, they want to stay in Verona and graduate because they've been in Verona since they were in preschool. Um, we will allow those students to stay as long as it's the third or fourth marking period. Um, a student, you know, second, third grade, mom and dad moves to Caldwell in May. It's, you know, three weeks left of school, we'll allow the kid to stay through the end of the school year, and then the following year they'll have to transfer to their new school. Um, but it does, it does away with that idea that a student can come one day. And then the parent can leave uh and move the next day and the student uh can stay. I think it's a nice kind of compromise. Have any questions about that?
No, but I did like the um, I liked under the three thousand stu- staff section and four thousand uh support staff section, the right of privacy policy, I thought that. Gave the districts a little more teeth i- in terms of, you know, protecting employees from from being kind of monitored by your cell phones and other things, so I I thought that was real smart.
We have another policy, by the way, that prevent, that protects staff and students from being. Un- uh unknowingly videotaped. Um, in the state of New Jersey, it's a one way, you can record somebody one way, as long as you're aware that you're recording someone. Not in the school district though, because our policy says that's not our, we're not recording students and we're not recording staff without their knowledge now. What excludes, what is excluded from that is things that people are invited to. That would, you know, normally potentially be videotaped. So we're talking about people in the classroom, people in study hall, in the building, those kind of uh protections for staff and students.
Thank you, does anyone else have any questions?
Only thing um that I would add was the um attendance policies, the thirty-two, twelve and forty-two, twelve, and really all that does. Is the law changed, so that aligns our policy with the new New Jersey sick leave law.
Any, thank you, thank you ladies. Moving on, we will open up for public comments, um, this will be public comments on agenda action items. So any items that we will be voting on, you can come up to the podiums, please state your name, and you will have three minutes. None, okay, moving on, we will go on to discussion items. I have just one thing I would like to, like to thank our entire board and Mrs. D Giuseppe and Mr. Cruz. For attending. And, oh yeah, how do we say his, that's right, we never really met him, yeah. Um, Henry. Specifically. Um, for attending our workshop. I um, we were all there and it was very, I think it was great that we all were able to make it and attend many classes, some together. But it was very, I thought it was a great event, and also um to Miss Freshy, thank you so much for nominating. Um, the crossing guard and his, him, Mr. Jim Schroder from, right Schroder, am I saying his surname?
Yeah, Schroder from. So just to expand on that a little bit, one, you're welcome, and I think it's a board.
That was great.
Duty to to um recognize everybody who contributes to our district. So what New Jersey school boards did in the past, they've always had a category and a ceremony for unsung, unsung heroes for students that weren't recognized for the typical. Sports or music or theater, and that takes place once a year, so what New Jersey school boards did, and this was the inaugural year. Was open as unsung superheroes to all support staff in schools, bus drivers, uh, crossing guards, nurses. Custodial staff, like everybody. Um, and Mr. Schroder is our crossing guard, he's at Forest Avenue and Hillside at the corner. And he touched my heart, he's been there for twenty-five years, he ushered thousands of kids to school, he is never not on that corner. And out of two hundred entries, he was selected and he was able to attend um the ceremony and it was great. Um, some of our board members and our superintendent were there to cheer him on, and he was very, very happy to have such a recognition. So this is something that could go forward um every year, and it was just really awesome to do something. For somebody who's outside of our ti- typical uh scope. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you, does anyone else have any items they would like to discuss? Or something like?
Um, I I just have a question, because at the last meeting we discussed some of the pilot money and possibility of reaching out to the township. Uh, regarding getting a joint meeting on the board, so I was just wondering if anything. Following up.
Moving on, we are going to. Go on to our resolutions, so I need a motion, please, to approve routine matters, resolutions uh A one.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Freshy, seconded by Mrs. Rosella, any discussion? Mr. Cruz, can you please call, roll?
Yes.
Mrs. Frizella?
Yes.
Uh, could I recommend Mrs. Farah's absent, Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
We have current motion pass.
Thank you, moving on to resolutions for personnel. I need a motion, please, to approve resolutions B one through B five. Motion by Mrs. Rosella, seconded by, I'll do the second, Mrs. Freshy. Are there any discussions? None, Mr. Cruz, roll?
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Frizella?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our education resolutions, I need a motion to approve resolutions C one through C four. Motion by.
So moved.
Mrs. Freshy, seconded by Mrs. Mrs. Rosella, are there any discussions?
Question, so under uh C one, three, the the French movie, I'm sure the movie's fine. But why is it that, is it part of our policy that anytime a movie's shown that has never been shown before, then the board must approve it first?
Anytime we we spend uh taxpayer money on resources.
Okay, so so if if they show this movie again next year, we're going to have to still approve it, or is it just?
We're just, we're we're approving the purchase of it.
Very good, thank you.
And I I did want to just mention um our norm, our policy normally is to only approve. Uh, professional development conferences, if they're over a hundred and fifty dollars, uh, you'll see a bunch on here for one forty-four seventy-three. I I had them put it on simply because there are uh one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, people going to the same conference, so collectively it's more than a hundred and fifty dollars. So I thought it would be.
Thank you. Mr. Cruz, if you could please call, roll?
Got to get some new batteries.
Uh, Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Frizella?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, moving on to facilities, I need a motion to approve resolutions E one to E two. Motion by.
Our motion.
Mrs. Frizella, seconded by second Mrs. Freshy, any discussion?
Give me a Cliff Notes version of the the community garden expansion, because that seems pretty cool.
Um, you never have to look at the actual, um, like, if they're going out by so much and why by so much?
Yeah, they had that diagram in there, yeah.
I think it's being used more by um classes and um like the specialized class that came this summer, they talked about throwing vegetables.
During during the school day, do we have like uh the right to the area first before anyone else, and then after school, do we?
Working, there are a lot of people there, um, but our figure out there.
Okay. Okay. That's my question. It's good. Come over here.
Okay, just a little checking that it's just like expanding into like open grass, it's like not near the field or any athletics.
Mr. Cruz, if you could call, roll?
Mr. Walker?
My microphone works great, so yes.
Mrs. Rosella?
Yep.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Great. You, moving on to our finance resolutions, I need a motion to approve finance resolutions F one to F eight. So moved. Motion by Mrs. Freshy, seconded by Mrs. Mrs. Rosella, are there any discussions? Mr. Cruz, can we please just call the role?
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Frizella?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Great, thank you. Moving on to governance, I need a motion to please approve resolutions G one to G three.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Freshy, seconded by.
I'll second.
Mrs. Rosella, any discussion?
I I just have a question in the H I B. The first one that's on my list, it says there's no identified offender.
Yeah.
I I don't know how, how can we have an H I B when we have an identified offender?
So a uh a parent reached out and um wanted to file this H I B, I ultimately filed on their behalf. That's why it says parents slash staff. Um, none of the students would give the name of the person that did this, but we know it happened. But we were unable to determine the offender, so it was definitely impacted our student. Definitely um significantly impacted our student, but we were not able to ascertain. A specific student.
But this could, if if you found the offender, then you could always reopen it.
Mm-hmm.
Very good.
And then just for the, there's one, like five, I think, from staff, one, two, three, four, five, and. Two, three of them were not investigated, is that a, is that because? With the staff member, we, I mean, obviously with the staff member reported didn't meet the standard of H I B and and. But does that mean that we need additional training in that, and that they're reporting things as H I B that may be code of conduct?
Yes.
Okay.
And and generally what that, when it says not investigated, that means uh in our policy, we have the principal's prerogative. And um it's kind of a pretty simple measure, it says if everything reported is true. As reported, and it does not meet the burden of the H I B law, you don't have to investigate it. Obviously, there could be, um, it could be a code of conduct, it could be conflict, there are other things that it would be investigated about, but not investigated as H I B. So that's when it, when you see it as um not investigated, but yes, we do need more training.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz, if you could please call, roll?
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Frizella?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Freshy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you. We are now going to open up the podium. For public comment on any item. You have three minutes, and please state your name.
Hi, everyone, um, my name is Laurel Brawley, I live on Newman Avenue, right here in Verona. Um, last time I was here in front of you all, it was a little over a year ago, and I was asking about um. The policy for background checks. Uh, um, and I'm back again, asking that same question. Um, you know, uh, in recent, uh, in light of recent events. I know no, we're not talking about anyone specifically or any specific situation, I would really just like to know. Um, what is in place? Um, now, or what what should have been followed? Um, previously, so that um we don't, the district doesn't hire another sexual predator to teach our children. Um, I think we're up to three now, but um my count could be off. Um, either way, it's one too many, as you all are quite aware. Um, I'm sure all of you as board members, parents, students, um, I'm sorry, this is a very emotional uh. Subject, as you can imagine, um. I'm not interested in being pointed to a website to hear what the, you know, background checks are are like. Um, I'd like to hear just, you know, human to human, what the what the policy is, so that this. Does not continue to happen, in all fairness, uh, Ms. D Giuseppe, I know. These people were not hired on your watch, so I completely understand that. Um, but uh we don't want this to happen anymore, right? We want a safe environment for our children. Um, this hit everybody really hard. And uh, my child had a lot of questions, and the one thing she really wanted to know too is that that. From what she heard, um, it was known throughout the school. Students knew, teachers knew, it's very disturbing, very concerning, because if that is true. Um, if no one felt that they could come forward to actually report the situation, um, that's a problem. Um, I work on a college campus, um, routinely, we have to go through uh Title Nine training. As staff members and as faculty members to recognize inappropriate behavior, anything that we think, um, you know, just doesn't look right. And we we all need to be trained on that, so what does that look like here? Is there a training in place, did things just fall through the cracks? I know things happen. Um, I think as as a general public. The parents would like to know that this won't happen again, thank you.
You're welcome, so I can answer your question.
Thank you.
Uh, because background checks in the state of New Jersey are more than just policy, are actually an administrative code. So uh our district, like any district, follows administrative code, we are monitored on that, we have to provide to the state that we've uh act, well, actually, we. Can't put a teacher in a classroom without getting their background check back. So a little about background checks, background checks only work if the person has been caught in a prior district. So um, you know, there's, there's no sign that anyone wears that says I'm going to do something really bad. Um, uh, and thank you for pointing out that I didn't hire anyone, but I could have, right? If their background check comes back clean, and we have something else in New Jersey called Pass the Trash, that's the short name for sexual. Um, uh, just misconduct disclosure, uh, where any person applying to a school has to fill out a form indicating that they've never been. Investigated for, dismissed for, or had their license uh removed as a result of being investigated or found to have engaged in any kind of um. Sexual misconduct with a student. Um, districts then have to follow up, and they have to certify that they are not, don't have knowledge. That anything like that has occurred with this person, but I'll I'll be very honest with you, I get them all the time for people I've never met. That worked here ten years ago, because if you're in uh an education field in New Jersey and you're going for a job with children, you have to fill this out. For your last twenty employers, so chances of not every superintendent or H R person knowing that person. So when I get one that I can't verify, I write. As far as I am aware, because I really don't know, so that's kind of like a little bit of a loophole. Um, but we we have uh gone through all of those background checks, and the second part of your, oh, um, it's just. So that the public is aware, I talked about this another time uh as well, we hired an independent investigator to come in and um. Go through and speak to our staff and and find out, you know. Who, how did this happen, so, you know, and it's not with an eye on on, you know, catching anyone or placing blame, but just to make sure we know how it happened.
Oh my gosh.
So in order to make sure that it doesn't happen again. Um, and we all in this room will agree that um this was a very horrible event for everyone involved. We have a community here that's hurting, and we never want to see anything like this happen again, so thank you.
Good evening, everyone, Michelle Bernardino, fourteen Gould Place in Caldwell, yes, I live in Caldwell. Um, I lived in Verona for seventeen years, my three children went to school here, my youngest is still here, and yes, he is a resident, so you don't have to write me out. Um, I do have kind of a follow-up question from Mrs. Broly regarding Pass the Trash, because I was always just curious. What if you don't receive that from the sending district?
Continue to ask for it.
Okay, so no one is hired unless that's received?
Right.
Thank you. Um, that wasn't my initial question, but I I really don't have a question, just some things I'd like to say. Um, so to be fully transparent, I am a teacher in another district. I'm formerly an administrator in another district, and I served on the Verona Board of Education set where some of you are right now. Aside from raising my own young adults, I've worked with children in many capacities for over 16 years. And regardless of my role, whether it's teacher, administrator, volunteer, parent, or Board of Education member, my number one job has always been to keep children safe. Not lesson plans, not curriculum, not test scores, none of it matters. It's to keep children safe. So a few words have come up and come to mind in light of these recent events. I think Ms. Broly used disturbing and concerning, sad, disgusted, disappointed. I'm sure we can go on and on with all of the adjectives. And why? Why all of these emotions? Because we didn't keep children safe. And I say we because I am not pointing the finger at one person, but all of us as a collective. And if you are a teacher, an administrator, an employee, any employee of a school district, or a member of the Board of Education, your number one job is also to keep students safe. Somewhere along the lines, we failed terribly. Complacency and turning a blind eye are not acceptable, just not acceptable when it comes to our children. So I too understand the laws regarding confidentiality, not here to call anybody out, not even asking a question, just making a request. We need to do better. Our children deserve for us to do better. So I also know that rumors and speculation can swarm the public's perception, what's true, what's not true, what everyone's talking about, what everyone hears can be a big gossip mill around here. But at the end of the day, the optics and the perception, when it comes to our children, it makes a difference. It matters. Because our children are watching us. They're watching everything that we're doing and learning from us, and our children deserve better. So one could surmise by all of the events that have taken place in the days and weeks and months that followed these events, that some district policies and regulations were possibly violated in some way by different players. To name a few of them, District Policy 3211, Code of Ethics, Code of Conduct, District Policy 3280, Liability for Public Welfare, District Policy 3281, Inappropriate Staff Conduct, District Policy 5512, Harassment, Intimidation and Bullying, District Regulation 1613, Disclosure and Review of Applicant's Employment History, Code of Ethics for School Board Members Regarding Confidentiality. If you choose to be employed by a school district or sit on its governing body, the safety and protection of our students should be on the forefront of your mind. If it is not, you don't deserve a seat at the table. We need to do better. And last, which is totally off topic, but just wanted to say thank you to Lisa. I know your term is coming to an end, and just thank you for your service and years. Lisa's been an integral part of this board, an integral part of the transparency that existed and a consistent voice for our schools. So thank you.
Thank you, Miss Bernardino.
Hi, my name is Peggy Kendrick. I live at 61 Elmwood Road here in Verona, my first Board of Education meeting, so. I'm I'm gonna be coming on the sentiments of these two ladies, but I have two, I think, questions, comments. One, I'd like to understand what the policy is in the schools for teachers or staff to be alone in a room with a student without another adult present. Perhaps the door can be open, and they should be in full view of the door at all times. I don't think that's hard. I don't think it's a difficult thing to ask. I also think that when you're talking about the safety of the teachers as well as the students, the teachers would be on board with that too. So I think that, I know we had to put up this cement wall because there are crazy people out there, but unless you're in full view with, you know, glass, you should never be alone in a room with a student, with a juvenile. I realize you can point to things like, if there was a crazy gunman that came in and a student got, you know, locked into a classroom with a teacher, fine. But let's be honest, on an everyday basis, children should not be alone, allowed in a room alone with a faculty or staff member. And on the heels of what Mrs. Broly said, it's on the tip of my tongue. No, I was, you said it, and I thought, oh, that makes, I know, but it ties into what I was, what I was thinking. It will come back to me. Okay. Secondly, I'd like to say that my understanding is that I don't know where all the security cameras are, but I know there are some in the school. I'm talking about the high school, so I can't speak to the other schools. But I also understand that the footage from any of these videos is deleted after 60 days automatically. And my understanding is that has to do with budget, that we don't have enough money, terabytes, petidites, whatever they are, to keep this video. I think that perhaps we might all agree that to keep that video for a year, I'm making up a number here, but would be helpful. Because sometimes people don't step forward right away. Ooh, go back to what I was thinking. Thank you. I just remembered myself. If you had a policy in place where teachers were not, or staff were not to be allowed in a room alone with a student, if another teacher was walking by and on a daily basis saw a particular teacher in a room with a student alone every day, they might say, hmm, maybe I should bring that to somebody. And because they have a policy to stand on, they can come to the principal and they can say, I think I've seen something that's inappropriate, or they can even say to their friend or coworker, it's not looking so good, guy. You, your, this is a policy, and, you know, I don't know if it's the union or the principal that's going to come after you, but you have a leg to stand on, and you're not just being somebody who's tattletaling. So it's going to help all around that kind of policy in place. So, sorry, back to my video. I would like to request that the video is kept on hand. It's simple, it's easy, and it's something that we could so easily go back to and be able to get rid of any rumors or he said, she said. It could just be done. In my final comment slash follow up, Mrs. Bernardino talked about some school policies or district policies, excuse me. And I would like to just point to some of them too. Policy 3211, that says that the, I guess it's the district shall not intentionally expose the pupil to embarrassment or disparagement. The second piece that I will point to is District Policy 3280, the liability for pupil welfare. A teaching staff member must immediately report any instance of et cetera, et cetera, or suspected child abuse. District Policy 3281, school personnel compensated and uncompensated are required to report to their immediate supervisor or building principal any possible violations of this policy, which goes on to, you know, being harm, inappropriate conduct. So again, without naming names, a female student was in a classroom alone with a male student teacher when another male teacher walked in and made a flippant comment insinuating that this was a scenario looking very similar to one involving the same teacher and a different female student from a previous school year. So here's a teacher walking into a classroom being like, hey, you look so much like Suzie Q. Number one, that embarrasses and disparages this poor girl who's alone and terrified in a room with a male teacher. Number two, this man's disgusting, and he didn't report anything. Sorry. It's an embarrassment, there's, there's, there's complicit acts all over the place. And back to what Mrs. Broly said, and my, I have a daughter in this school as well. Everybody knew, everybody knew. And don't tell me that if all the students knew, that the teachers didn't know. And the fact that nobody stood up, said anything is heartbreaking. And so much. The ripple effect of this is just, the butterfly effect is crazy. And I'm so hurt and I'm so discouraged, and I just, I I can't ask more that we pay attention, put our children first, prioritize their safety, train our staff and faculty. This isn't okay, and it's okay to step up. And P S, last comment, we're all being told to see something, say something. Somebody said it earlier and it's something that we were talking about. Well, when somebody steps up and sees, says something, it's not necessarily working in her favor. And that is a shame. And so I really hope that you will all take this to heart, and that we can do better as a school system or a town. Thank you.
Thank you. Just so that the public is aware, we do are required to train Title Nine every year and do. I do think we need to change our, the way we train some of this reporting responsibilities. So so that you know, we are moving in that direction. It was through GCN. It is no longer through GCN. We're going to be doing those trainings individually. I know how it goes.
I'd like to to comment on one part of what Ms. Kendrick said. And it's, this is also from Ms. Kendrick and just a question for Verona. I know that where I am, I have 96 cameras, and we just upgraded our system, and we're still only able to get, we went from three weeks of being able to keep recordings before they rerecord over them, and now we're at six weeks. So we doubled it, which is good, but I I agree if you can, sometimes things happen seven weeks ago, and then it would have been really nice to have that, but the system automatically rerecords. Perhaps in a future board meeting, we can get LT on to let us know how many cameras, because that's going to dictate, you know, how long the the footage is going to be able to be stored. And what's our current rate for how long we can keep footage?
It's actually 31 days. It's not even.
You guys are 31, right? So that's, that's, that's better than me. But it's, it's something where I I think that perhaps, you know, in the long term, if we, if we just slowly looked at more, like I don't know if it's bandwidth or storage or whatever it would be, that might not be a bad investment to to make over, over time.
Well, the other, for this particular area, there's no coverage, like the camera space in the opposite direction. So there are blind spots in all of our buildings that we need to think about as well. And all of the classrooms, by the way, are blind spots. Because we don't have cameras in any classroom except for the gymnasium, and the only reason they're in there is because we eat lunch in there and.
Right. There was, there was one workshop class that I attended at workshop, and it was about security cameras and about where they are and where they could be and the directions, and there's all different different kinds to get, so you can get into different areas. So.
The newer ones, like the 180 degree eyes, like those are pretty cool, like what you could do with those.
Really pick up a lot.
So it's, it's, it's a long term investment because they're, they're not cheap, right?
They're not cheap. And and when we first installed them in most schools, they weren't for catching things like this. They were for intruders. They were for, you know, in people coming in that don't belong. And ours actually link to the Verona Police, actually it links to state police, Verona Police, anyone that has access to our code. So if we did have someone that didn't belong in the building come in, they can actually find them on the cameras out from outside the school. That's why cameras were installed. So we do have to maybe rethink the positioning of them now that we had this horrific event. Thank you.
If that feed is going to the police, do they have a storage? Like, does that, so it's just, it's just a communication from, from the school to the, to the police?
They can look at our storage. They have access to go back and look at our storage. And they can lie, they can look at it live. So if something's happening in our schools, they can log in and and check the cameras to try to locate.
Okay, so it's not going in a specific, like, they're not able to store the footage for a longer period of time?
No, it's on our servers.
My understanding of our memo of agreement with the the local police is that it's, it's not like they're, they would be able to go on when there's no emergency and just see what's going on.
Oh, okay.
It would have to be, it would have to be something where there's an emergency and then in there.
Then they get, they get, they're able to see it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come to the podium?
I feel bad, mine, that's a very serious subject, so mine is serious, but in a different nature.
Can you just state your name, sir? I'm sorry.
Chris Lambert.
Thank you.
Lived in Verona for about 20 years now, and my kids are in high school, two kids are now in college. Verona Schools have really treated us well. They've done a great job educating our kids. In this world where technology is leapfrogging every year, I saw a couple of years ago that Verona was starting a robotics program in high school, which I felt really good about. I'm an mechanical engineer by, by trade, and I've been working at for controls and security in the past 20, 30 years. So a lot of what you guys said, maybe I could talk to you afterwards. I can help you out. When the robotics program was started a couple of years ago, we actually, me and my daughter reached out to see if we could start one. And my company actually sponsors First Robotics, so they were going to give a stipend, which I thought was a considerable amount until I realized how much First Robotics cost, and I realized why that might not be the right way to go. And then you guys hired a teacher to run the robotics program, which I thought was another great step. Unfortunately, a failed step. So now we're in year three, and Verona Schools made another great step. They now have a robotics class, which they're teaching robotics. And so what I'm asking is for Verona to take that next step. So you guys are invested in Vex Robotics, which is a great program, and you're teaching it in a school. The next step, I believe, would be to then enter in competitions outside of school. So I I'd like to volunteer my aid as a mechanical engineer in a controls industry for the past 30 years. I'd love to, you know, help other people learn. My, my own company that I work for is always looking for bright new individuals, both high school graduates and college graduates. So everybody who can learn a little bit more about technology is a great resource to this country. So I was just looking forward to hearing if that's in your, in your plan going forward.
I'm a science background in both my former districts. We had robotics clubs with classes, clubs, and competitions. So yes, it's something that we should be doing. Now that we have the class, there's no excuse not to. So.
Yeah, I look forward to you guys entering a competition this year.
That's, I mean, yeah, hope so. Yeah, ambitious, but listen, the kids are doing well.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Anyone else?
Just going to piggyback on that. When, when you say our students should be entering competitions, I'm like such a huge proponent of those experiential experiences for our kids, and some of the clubs that we have, like DECA and Model UN and Mock Trial, this would be like a phenomenal addition to that. And I too always send science competitions. The company my husband works for runs one of the largest student science competitions in the country. And I keep waiting for Verona to send a student. So keep pushing that. Our kids keep, need to hear it from the adults and the teachers, because sitting in a classroom is great and getting out there and seeing what other students are doing. And you learn that maybe you're not as big a fish as you think you are, or you come out victorious and you have something really cool to brag about. So thank you for bringing that up.
The Regeneron competition that you're talking about really requires kids to be doing authentic science research, though, which we don't have here yet. Yet. I say yet, I brought it to two districts. I, I'm looking, I'm trying. That's, that's big.
Thank you. I appreciate you all coming up tonight, too. So seeing there's no one else that would like to speak, our next scheduled meeting will be scheduled, is scheduled for November 14, 2023, beginning with confidential session at 6:00 PM and public session at 7:00 PM in the Verona High School Learning Commons. I need a motion, please, to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Motion by Mrs. Freshy, seconded by Mrs. Rosella. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The meeting is adjourned and is now 8:08 PM. Thank you all, and have a happy Halloween.